All right, it is six thirty. I do hereby call the City of Swisher Joint City Council and Park and Recreation Board meeting to order. Klein.
Here.
Heineck.
There.
Woodjoe.
Here.
Rotor.
There.
Stag.
Here.
Me called meeting. Oh, yeah. Called meeting. If you could take.
Dylan. Breeze.
Here.
Kringle.
Yeah.
Stammen. Thank you. Council, can I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion approved.
Sorry.
All those in favor? Anyone opposed?
Motion to, or do we have a motion to approve the agenda? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed?
Thank you. All right, so we will start with Casted Park. We'll start with a discussion of the maintenance and repair requirements presented by.
Well, I gave you the list the last time. Department, so everybody probably has a list of things. So maybe you can tell me what has happened.
I know Public Works did a little bit on it, right?
Yeah, I've got electricians supposed to be coming out to get the scoreboard and the lights working here hopefully within the next week. And we've got everything at the park the last couple of days catching up on some of the weeding and stuff and we've kind of pulled any weeds off of the volleyball area as we could and we're tomorrow going to be tackling the playground area and some of the other areas. But most of the weeding is done, we're going to be trying to pull some more weeds and then parking, we were talking a little bit about the other day, we'd like to I don't know if this is what you're referring to or if you're referring to more maintenance, but we'd like to widen it a little bit more even because I know it's tough for vehicles backing out. And now that we've got that mini hoe with the blade, I think we could probably scrape, you know, pretty easily scrape that wider both directions a little bit and maybe, you know, depending if you want to take that up to the railroad ties on the playground, so there's not this whole strip of grass tomorrow. That was another thing we talked about a little bit.
And I know we'll talk about weeds here on another item as well because we pulled the contract with these.
But if you guys, if you guys widen that up to put the cars all the way up to the playgrounds equipment, would that be kind of just in case the kid would get hurt, fricking hit in one of the cars or something, that'd be a little.
I think we still leave our parking barriers there back a little bit. But
The gravel.
On the sides, you can widen it more, you know.
On the.
Not right, like, we can still leave a gap there between the playground.
You're talking about widening it on it.
On the south side more than anything.
Okay, okay.
South side, yeah.
Kind of where those trees were.
The trees out by the road, on the roadside, yeah, of the parking lot, I'd like widen that, I think we could probably go I don't want to go a lot, maybe another two feet or so. Or three, depending on, I mean, if we, you know, if everybody's okay with it, wanting to go wider than that, we could probably do it, but I mean, just, just based on the lay of the grass and stuff, you could at least get another two or three feet out of it, I think. Without making it look too awkward or having to do a whole bunch of landscaping to it.
I think one of the issues with the parking is we need better signage up there for people to understand how to do the parking during the softball tournament, it was an absolute mess of people not knowing which way to pull in angle park. I don't know if the south side ones. Because when I originally looked at it, I was like, what is going on? These have, it looked almost like you have to come in from both directions to park. So I think better signage, I think widening it is definitely going to help. But I do think if we actually want to fix parking up there long term, we do have to look at chipping ceiling it and spraying lots. That's the only way to actually let people know how to park because it is a very congested area when you get something like the softball tournament where there's a lot of people up there. It's going to be a nightmare. And I mean, that grass that we're referring to kind of removing, that had to be ruined. I saw huge ruts in it. After the softball tournament because people are going to park where they can park and that's what's going to happen.
So I think. Chip and seal would need to be stripped and, Cody?
Yeah, chip and seal and stripped. I mean.
We own that entire section that's all considered parking.
Yeah.
So we could push it as far as we want, we don't even have to make an angle.
Yeah.
We could do parallel parking on the south side to get more spots in there because we could take out that strip and just.
I think as much space as we can get out of it, but long term, I think, you know, when we're looking at maybe even instead of doing another road next year, look at chipping ceiling that lot. I mean, I think a lot of those public space lots like that, there's no reason to should we grab after this many years? If we want that part to look nice, chip and seal it. I think that should be an expectation.
What do we have in the road? Yeah, thank you, thank you, George. Working on. Think that'd be the best use, but I know that there is, again, money in local options, money in the general fund, there's there is this, I don't know what it's called, there's this capital equipment, oh, seven fund that has about forty-two, forty-three hundred dollars in it.
Is that saving up for a truck?
I don't know.
Yeah, I think that's up pretty.
Oh, for parks?
No, yeah, for, it's parks.
Oh, it is.
It's labeled parks. It's capital equipment parks.
That's probably for saving up for a mower.
But that would fall into a whole of works.
Yeah, right. Was that the money we set aside last year though?
Forty-two thousand is a huge.
Well, if I said forty-two hundred.
Oh, forty-two hundred.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that was the money maybe we set aside last year for a couple of things. But I think, because they currently Chad Fogan is using his own forward of the drag, drag.
So were you guys saving up to get one for the park?
Or some sort of tractor, perhaps?
Yeah, because that would make sense.
Was this what we talked about last meeting though with money set aside that wasn't clear? No, that's different.
I think that this is not, I, I, I would think that that would be included in the youth sport or the, the, the rec, youth sports money, don't you think?
I don't.
I don't know, I guess I can check, I can check with Tonya to see what it was set aside for. I don't think it was something that was just set aside, I think it's been there for years and it's just basically gaining a little.
Well, at the same time, the previous Parks and Rec Board set the money aside for something and I've never informed you guys of it. It's yours to do with.
Right.
Well, the council approves.
Yes, but you know, they can make.
But they, yeah. Right. So do we want to look into bids for chip sealing and expanding the parking lot?
Not this time of year.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'd wait till spring.
Wait till spring.
Yeah, you're gonna get it done this time of year.
What did that area cost?
Oh, I don't. I don't remember.
That was added to.
Whenever doing the, just the annual stream improvement?
Yeah, I think it was in there.
I think it was.
Couple thousand?
Yeah, it's like four grand.
Four grand.
I mean, if you're gonna do that whole thing, you're.
It's gonna be.
You're looking at some serious. I would, I would look at asphalt just to compare because at that point would be more durable and longer lasting.
But we are coming up to budget season, so this is one of those things that if we are going that direction, she can put it in the budget for next year.
Right.
And we do it next summer.
Could you still send out?
No.
Cancelled up?
Yeah.
Um, would the engineer be able to give us like a rough estimate of what they, yeah, maybe we just need to ask engineers who have the budget for it? Yeah.
Yeah. Six one from all, but your prices are really too horrible for.
We're usually thirty to sixty.
Correct. Speaking on all this other stuff, Justin, how, how many hours a week do you guys have to spend mowing the park? Mowing and weeding?
It's a full day, isn't it Dylan? Between the two parks.
Yeah. I think just for the one, it's more than a day. I, I mean, between the two, you're probably a day and a half or, or so, I mean.
Is it something we can keep up with or is that one of the problems?
Well, it's, that's kind of one of the things that we were kind of, I was talking to Tonya about, you know, when she was still here about, let's go another year and just see how it is. But it's not something that's it's something that I think we're going to need in the future, I mean, especially with you know, stuff getting.
I'm getting to the point, it doesn't, it doesn't need to be contracted out.
There's a lot of other stuff.
I don't know.
They're working on that they don't have time to get to because Dylan has to mow some.
I guess contracting it out or, or doing like the part-time mowing position, which is you know, I don't know what the cost is in contract mowing out. So I don't know which would be more of a beneficial solution for the city.
Well, well, what I'm getting at is if you guys are, if you guys don't, I mean, with all the stuff that's going on in town, if you guys don't have the time to be doing it, even if it's going to cost us a little bit more and if we can get more stuff done by you guys that need to get done in the town and we're, and you guys, say, say both of you guys that ten hours a week, there's twenty hours if it's two guys.
Yeah, and I, and I think that's the end the other day that, you know, next, when we do the next budget, I'd like to talk about getting that, you know, added in, now that we've gone, you know, most of another year.
Right.
Because there's something that would, it would take quite a bit of a load off because.
Well, then, then you don't have the maintenance costs and the buying costs of mowers and stuff too. I mean, you're still going to have a mower, I'm saying, but you might not need a mower as fast if you're not wearing it out at the park all the time and you're not using it as often.
Yeah.
You know, you're not putting as many hours on it, obviously.
Yeah.
Did we have a temporary summer mowing?
Yeah.
We have in the past.
Yeah, not this year we didn't.
But this year we.
Because we hired Dylan full-time, but then now.
That was their only responsibility to do that once a week.
We've had, we've had in the past where we've done that for mowing, we've done it for snowing.
Yeah.
I mean, just various things to have had a temporary job.
Yeah, we would want to the pay on it, that's why we didn't get any tickets last year.
Which we could talk about that too, if we wanted to advertise for that particular position again.
I'd be interested to see what that temporary position would be versus getting a quote from somebody local.
Well, maybe that's.
Just to put a year contract on doing that park, this park. See what it would come out, it could be cheaper than paying benefits and, you know.
Maybe that's.
They do the same thing at the cemetery, they contract that out every.
But I would look at someone.
Right. Spring. There's a lot.
Is that something that we can talk about during budget so we can get through?
Yeah.
The rest of the split. Like three items on the list.
I just wanted to bring that up because I know that they're, I mean, if they're complaining about, I mean, I've been up at the park and nothing against you guys or anything where the grass has gotten high just because you guys haven't had time to get to it and if we're talking about weeds and everything else, you contract that out, that's not our responsibility. I mean, we just make a call and say, you know, it means you need to mow it or, or be on the contract with them, they're doing it once every ten days, once a year.
Yeah, like I said, I mean, something I definitely wanted to bring up was to get that set up either whichever ways, you know, make more sense financially.
Yeah, let's talk about that budget season.
Patty, how about that shingles and ceiling on the roof one of the pavilions, anything about is that?
Let's, let's talk about that in B so we can want that in with the buildings.
I'm just going back to what Patty had her list.
Yeah, we haven't even hit everything on this, on this. We're already fifteen minutes in the meeting. Yeah, so.
I agree.
B is grounds, buildings and equipment. So now, moving on to B, we can talk about buildings out at Casted Park.
Well, I just don't believe. Three or four A's, that's what I wouldn't buy.
So buildings, who owns what is the biggest question?
Well, I I did get a list from the city's insurance and I'll just run down the list as it's listed on, on what I got from the insurance. So the city ensures the scoreboard, the restrooms, the large and small pavilion and the garden shed and playground equipment and ball field fence at Casted Park. In the downtown park here, then it's the playground equipment and the shade cover and holes. So that might help a little bit to understand who owns what other than I did. Um, I did ask about I asked, excuse me. There's coverage for the athletic surfaces like the basketball, tennis court, pickleball courts. And he thought that that was all covered in what we are already ensuring, except for.
It made a weird thing, it's coming back on.
The basketball hoops and nets, holes, light holes. Probably not, I asked about the dugouts and the bleachers, I don't know who owns those, I don't know. They're included in insurance right now, yeah. See, the dugouts are now a part of, right?
Who also don't, if the city does.
Well, like the batting cage, I don't know.
The dugouts, the city purchased all the materials.
Okay, yeah, but like bleachers, would that go with?
Those have been there as long as I can.
That, that, that bleachers are donated from, I think, Patty, if I'm thinking right, I think it might even be John Milky that's on that. It's on, there's, there's a plaque on them bleachers and then were donated to the city of Swisher, so we own.
Okay.
So to the pavilion. Did you guys look at getting quotes?
I have not got quotes for it yet.
You're talking about chingling it?
Really? So at the last at do we look at putting a metal roof on it? I don't think we look at chingling. But just looking at the underneath of it, we, you know, they'll probably put on key hornets and moss and whatnot from getting up in there. But is it cheaper and better for it might not be something we could do right now, but we budget for it in the next two years or something, I don't know.
It is, but it keeps jumping from the halls to my computer.
Basically, share everything off it, put in a new post, don't have cross. It has to hit.
So you could just.
My cross.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And just extend it, keeping the concrete, just extending it out.
So the scene's still going. Stop jumping back.
Here.
It's good.
The speakers are.
Around it and all the benches and everything around town, making sure there's not a few concrete lips there around.
So since the city owns it, city maintains it. So park or just our, our city employees. So then should Ed even be working on it or should we be working? Right, no, right, so we should be looking into the group name and.
Okay. Then I won't get quotes. So I think then we should look at quotes for one metal roof or, or Justin. Getting quotes for a metal roof or two.
Do you want to do both of the items? Just.
Just. Line and plug in. It could be the walls.
I mean. Ultimately.
My laptop's charged, just take me out and chug the other one in.
Ultimately, what the park boils down to is there's a lot of stuff that needs fixed and we don't have enough money to fix it. And people are happy because instead of getting some of it done, we're getting another. It's nobody's fault, but really everybody's. I'm not going to put the blame on one person or one group, it's really collectively, I think, all of us because we've let it fall to where it is. So I think if we want to make the town's people happy, all they're simply asking for is for us to actually start doing something. Start working. Like if they think that we're going to fix all of it by next spring, they're nuts because we don't have the money to do it. But if we start chipping off one thing, two things, three things, then it looks like, oh my God, they're giving money back in. It is getting time for budget season, now is the time for us to look at investing back into it. So for me, for the pavilion, let's get a quote one, what's the metal roof been cost? The problem still is the whole undershooting of it is trash. The beams themselves, how much life do they have left? It's not, it's not a good design with the cross beams. Is it better for us to completely tear it down, rebuild a new structure? The second pavilion is still in good enough shape that we don't have to worry about that right now. Maybe five, ten years down the road, we can look at doing it and aiming it at for Patty. But let's wrap off like one thing and maybe we get quotes back and it isn't something we can even do next spring, but we can sit there and tell people we are planning on budgeting for twenty-six to get this done, you know?
So on that, Cody, I went out there recently, I've been going out to the parks pretty frequently. That second pavilion, one of the beams has been burnt away at one section in the center of the beam. About one-third of the way of this two by six, I don't know how big this board is, but it's, it's a good burn.
Like somebody lit it on fire by?
Yeah, like intentionally, I mean, you're going to have that in parks vandalism is going to be high in parks, so.
But we do have cameras.
Justin, can we look at that beam then, just to make sure?
It's not too bad, we can probably patch it for now, but like, just in the consideration of things like as much as they're okay, like we are also talking about the sloping of it and how it's a trip hazard with that concrete and like we really just want to.
And I think that, that I think is actually in.
Yeah, we budgeted for some dirt.
Yeah. That was the thousand dollar dirt around the building flush on slab?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I was a thousand dollars, I don't know how much black dirt costs, I don't know how much you need.
Sure.
Or if you have.
They both need them, it's, it's not just one or the other.
Well, and it's all, it's all the benches too, right? All the benches with concrete platforms, like this park even needs dirt around it.
Yeah. I think.
Thousand bucks, including your seed and straw and everything.
I just threw a number out because I. We have a giant pile at the park that we use and then I just let the weeds come up, keep them on them down, so.
Uh, Mike, do you know, I know the sewer project was using that dirt at Firehouse, they use all that or is there?
That is clay, that's not. This isn't on the list, but is this something to kind of think about down the road too is, I think that concession stand and bathrooms, would, would that look better like if we instead of just being that block building, if it was like painted and maybe even put like our, you know, now that we're going with our Swisher logo or whatever, even having that.
Well, that's on, that's what you're talking about for siding on it?
And no, it's the one side, the siding's coming off, it's going off, it's mowed and.
See, that's like my thing, that building puts awful.
Right.
The group is looking at redoing the bathrooms.
We did.
They are done.
Yeah.
So, I mean, I, I think just even adding a simple siding to it, contracting someone to come and side it, will give it a fresh look, something as simple as that.
Just a suggestion to kind of, again, keep us moving a little bit. Is it something that Justin can kind of maybe get some quotes on this stuff and bring
Yes.
to the Park and Rec Board to review, make a recommendation on what priority?
That's my question, is that Parks and Recs or is that ours since it's our building?
Well, well, if you look at the code, Park and Recs are, for lack of a better word, to advise the council on park improvements, park. You know, so when somebody brings this or Justin brings it to the Park and Rec Board, you know, yeah, they keep, they can direct Justin to get a, a quote on something. And then that would be a recommendation to the council if they choose to, you know, yes, it's time or or we can put that off for a couple more years and Justin can patch the, the, the beam that's burnt. So that's kind of how this works, you know, I think, again, this year we're going to get a better structure on how budgeting is going to happen. But I, I just think that you know, some of these things need to be brought at budget time, right? Because unless, unless there's an emergency diary, we do have some, some money budgeted for some of these projects this year. But I don't know if it will happen yet this year.
You know, going forward, like for the next three to five years on our budget, I do think we need to up our parks money that with, with as bad a shape as our park has gotten, I mean, nobody's fault, but everybody's like Cody said, but I think we need to like, because on refining our budget is, okay, I'm just using this stupid number, let's say we had five thousand dollars, maybe for the next five years, we should have ten thousand dollars budgeted to that.
And just keep in mind that the changes the way I made on these budgeted budgets, we might be looking at more cuts again this year. It's a little early. My numbers, yeah, looking at cutting here, I do with last year. They change the way the budgets go, it's hurting some. So, yes, I would love to see the parks improved, yes, I would love to put more money into parks, if it comes down to and sewer people to maintain a sewer or improving a burnt structure.
So how much do you have in the budget right now in the parks? Does anyone know that?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's right around if there's some. Sixty sixty-eight thousand dollars is budgeted in parks, but I don't think salaries, right, half of that is salaries. There's, or more actually. For, for any kind of special projects, there's about six, about ten thousand dollars. And that is the dirt around the pavilion, lawn care, set control, a shelter, a refreshing or I'm sorry, reshingling the shelter roof is in there at five thousand dollars. I don't know when that was because we certainly didn't budget five thousand dollars. Or it didn't happen, right? Again, you, I, I'm sorry, I just, I don't have most to look at. You can give me some information.
I, I think the five grand came from, because I was like, well, I paid about that for my new roof and that roof is.
What was that supposed to be this fiscal year or last fiscal year? Okay, there's only a thousand dollars budgeted this fiscal year. So I'm guessing it didn't happen whenever I asked that. And three thousand dollars in supplies. Well, it's hard to know because I didn't do this.
Right, I mean. But like Cody says, if we just do something small.
Yeah.
The siding on the pavilion or the bathrooms would probably take somebody a half hour or an hour that knows what the heck they're doing. I don't know what I'm doing, I'm not doing it, but somebody here knows how to do it.
Right.
If you ask the right people, they'd be more happy to go up there and do it.
Except we can't just have a citizen do it.
We can sign the waiver.
Yes.
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 One thing with, all with the stuff that needs to be done up there, I really think it'd be really good to like the more local people, local companies or businesses that we could have do the work would, would look good for the city too, I mean, for looking for council, the citizens, everybody, because, I mean, I'm not saying you have to, I mean, all of a sudden if somebody comes in three times higher than somebody else, we're not going to hire them, but, I mean, just like even like little stuff like who was Frank that did the concrete up there? You know, just little stuff like that, it, it means a lot to the town.
Yeah, Justin, I think you get a quote on a metal roof for that pavilion. Also get a quote on building a brand new pavilion. Maybe get a quote on siding the entire concession stand, so it's not even cinder block, it's sited, so it'd look nice.
Then the dirt, put on the dirt.
Yeah. And then the outfield fence. I don't know, I don't know a lot about fences, I don't know if it's, the fence itself is not a bad fence. It's not curled up, it's, it's not bad. I don't know if it's as simple as if we had the right people, if you can undo the ties on it, lower it down six inches and redo it.
That's what we got right here.
The quote?
You got a quote, yes. I'm a mover and shaker and I'm talker. They said cut down the posts and just.
They said cut down the posts and just move the fence down. And then I wasn't up there when they came to give the quote, so I think if we took, helped them took the fence out. Which I'm sure we could get enough people that would sign their waiver.
Yes.
And then we could take it down. They could come and put the fence in, cut down the posts. We'd save probably half of that money.
What's that?
Yeah, just for the outfield fence, yeah.
Then there's another one on.
Yeah, so.
I think that one might be for the dugouts. I'm not really sure. Because we've got that tubing. And if somebody gets hurt, it's not gonna be good.
That, that's actually a hazard. That's more than, you know, that's usually in most projects. That goes to the top of the list. Anything that's a hazard to any mother you're talking about, a company or a park or whatever.
Well, the sensor on basketball court too. It's curling out, it's got holes in it, it's got loose metal hanging off of that. I mean, it's, that one needs done too.
Yeah. Some of the monies that we have budgeted right now, um, I think we can make, make that happen, right? Yeah, I think we should make that happen because then everyone will be like, wow, look what they're doing. And they're excited when I took the tops off the outfield fence. That was broken.
Well, that's the thing. They got new toppers. There's no need to put the new toppers on it till the fence is fixed.
Correct.
But also going into that, the infield has to be a priority. Um, I know you said you gotta.
I got a rough quote for about fourteen grand.
Yeah, and that's just to redo the infield. That is. I mean, it's rock hard. It's unsafe, like.
Right.
That's, that's like the big joke. Like when we have our softball tournament, like people like, no, you do not slide. You don't do anything because it's dangerous. It's, you're sliding on pure limestone. And so then we take our little kids up there to play like. The, the reason we've let this happen for the past twenty years, I don't know. Um, I mean, it could be something that if we could find volunteers, I don't know who has to give others stuff to tear that out, down a foot. We could use that to backfill the outfield track. And then that cost probably goes down because whoever comes in and installs it is just installing a new infield. Or Justin, I mean, you guys probably have machinery. Or we can rent something to tear out a foot down all through the infield, you know?
What happened with the donation?
I have not, we haven't come up with a. Thing for that yet.
Well, honestly, um. Drew Pond said, and since he works for Witters, he could come in and do the infield. And it would be free labor and you would use the equipment. I think that would be the way to go. I mean, who's gonna turn down free labor and free?
My concern is that we had cleaned it up, the sports cleaned up the infield this spring and now it looks the way it does because we don't have anything, any equipment to maintain it.
Right.
So unless we buy the equipment to maintain it, it's just gonna get back to that way.
Like a drag and a.
Well, we have the drag. We just don't have to pull the drag.
You don't want to dispose it in some place.
I think that's part of the problem is the infield itself is the wrong material. Like we can't go back to that type of material. So I mean, I think if we get the correct material in, dragging it should be a lot easier. Our golf cart should be able to pull the drag on a proper infield. But until we get there, I agree with you, but otherwise we need equipment to do it.
There's so many weeds. I think you only get the weeds up first.
And I, I will mention there will be, um, a Swisher open this next Saturday. Uh, and the proceeds of that will be getting donated into parks and that. So that should be a significant monetary donation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Does the infield isn't worth it to do it this late in the year or to do?
That is a thing. Is there grants for parks?
Probably, yeah. And there are a lot of local businesses that need to donate to that kind of stuff. It's tax write-ups.
So would that then fall on parks and?
Find grants and propose them to council.
I think that's my gear to. Look at to start really knocking off a lot of these things and.
Our group will be applying for some, now we have our own, we'll be starting with like go to MLB and things like that and see if we can get some things for little kids. Not sure how it's not oldie, but.
A great source of grant information and grant writing. Yeah, she's written grants for, when she was in a man after the, I'm on the sewer board now and she's writing grants for the sewer department over there.
So to kind of wrap this section up, is there anything that we're looking at that could be? Still done at this point in this year, or is it us getting quotes and budgeting and planning to do in the spring? Like is the fence something that we could? Probably still get done in the next two months. I don't know.
Well, did, did we, was that this right? That we thought maybe half, so maybe twenty-five hundred? I can talk to them and see if we can, you know, if we take the fence down, why wouldn't they? I mean, all they're going to be doing is cutting the posts down and reapplying.
You can get the dirt. And the dirt for sure around. I mean, from what I see is a budget reading between the lines, there's six to seven dollars in the subset that can't be spent yet this year. And there'll be more coming in this year, so then that's next year's budget.
So, yeah. I don't know if that's something you wanted to get another quote from because. Up there, it's like Cook Fence had done a lot of the stuff, so you might wanna talk to them also. I don't know who did the outfield, but I know the fence between Bill Tubbs and the park, that says Cook fencing. So that might, I don't know who was around when they installed fencing, but.
Especially sports starting soccer season or, or week, so I mean, it is gonna be a lot of traffic.
And I really like seeing like more of these programs up there. It's, it's great. I grew, I grew up in this town and we had. We had ball practice up there. Every team had ball practice up there every night. Back then soccer wasn't around, but.
Yeah.
It was baseball, you know?
Yeah, we have eighty kids up there.
Yes.
Um, seven or four to six and then seven to nine.
Yeah, my granddaughter played up there on the sun, on the Saturday mornings of the year.
That's where I just think like, let's do the outfield fence still this year and then we could budget for the infield fence in the spring or something, you know?
Maybe we need to find out when they're not using the park or when soccer's over.
First, we need to get bits. So if Justin at least gets a bit in the car. And then.
For the fencing?
Yes. For the fencing and the durs. But we want a second one. Is that, I'm not saying. Would parks want a second thing?
I think the quicker we can get on this, the better, cause if we have to wait till our meeting and then we had to wait till your meeting. We're looking at November before anything is even happening.
I'm just trying to think, cause we got that, we got a quote on fence. That whole edge on. You know, all the way on the backside. No, I can't remember.
But that was installing all new.
Yeah.
This is just. And by November, you guys are wrapping up soccer.
I am looking currently, I believe so, yes.
I think that's a lot of fence and that doesn't seem like that bad of a number.
But this is, this is not for the apartment. We are not required. It's too, it's just such a small.
I could have somebody at the parks. Who's on the committee come up there and we could talk to the gentleman someday. So there's three of us and we all are on the same page. Did they give an estimate of when they could get to it? No, but I think I have some polls, so we'll be okay.
October nineteenth is when we're, their last game.
It wouldn't be until November because it'd be the second.
But what I'm saying is, is it something that can happen in a couple of days or is, I mean, like, I don't know how big of a project this is or.
There's four hundred and twenty-five feet of outfield fence.
I would say regardless, we wait till youth sports is done for the fact that if we're gonna be the ones tearing it down. We don't want that laying on the ground with the kids running around. Wait till the kids are, like, even if it's October twentieth, we tell them it could be your first day on it. We could, or probably give us a day to tear it down, you know, a night, uh, but then they could come in and do it.
And I can get back with them and follow up and see how long it would take and what kind of discount we could get if we take the fence down.
So at this point, do we motion to approve up to the forty-three hundred, hoping it's less? Or do we need to get the discount and then? So then.
But we still want Justin to get quotes for the dirt.
Yes, fair.
We just have to stay under that thousand, right?
You're not talking like a huge project. Just do it. It's do it.
If it's in the budget.
Come on. And that's why things aren't getting done around here. You just gotta get them done. I don't know, but.
We can get up to a thousand dollars of work done. Whatever a thousand dollars covers, we get that much done and then the next. It's gonna take more than you think to do it, right?
Alright, there you go, Justin.
Alright, I gotta roll, guys.
For a motion to this or that, or is this just good to go and done?
I think the, the staff has the direction.
Love that.
Um, just let's finish up here on this list. So we haven't hit on evergreen racks around it, trees through fence and lights on their base side.
The evergreen and the trees through the fence, I think the trees through the fence were kind of being taken care of, but we also had an Eagle Scout come and talk to us about making. The rocks around the evergreen tree part of this Eagle Scout project. Wouldn't waste any time there.
We won't box around trees.
He didn't know which trees. Uh, specifically to look at doing it. He's got a project and works to do rocks around the trees and to paint all his troop is gonna paint all of picnic trenches at the park.
Why are we putting rocks around trees?
It's not rocks. It's just, it's got those lots around that big evergreen. Yes, that, and nobody has organized them for probably a few years, so they're here, there.
There, there are like a tree of heaven or any base of mulberry. Though, that can be a quick, like five-minute lot. I would do before it gets any bit bigger. That big Colorado blue spruce out there, there's a little invasive species. It's kind of green, kind of wide looking, kind of palm looking. Um, when those invasives grow up in there, over time they'll get taller and stronger and they'll kill out those branches of the evergreen. It'll happen with a lot of the faces because birds will. Within it, so mulberries are common and tree of heaven is maybe more common. You'll start to see and maybe, maybe even oriental bitter so. It's just one or two right now. It's, it's like ten minutes. It's not too, it's not too bad.
Alright, moving on. Yeah, let's move on to.
Item two.
Alright, maintenance responsibilities, bathrooms. Uh, there's a new cleaning plan this year. How's that going?
And the bathrooms are all the whole park.
Um, bathrooms, trash.
I, I think it was two nights ago. I was in there with my son and I threw something away. It just flies, exploded.
There's. Yeah.
There needs to be a plan of who's cleaning what.
Well, even just for instance, tonight, there was a big event in the park. So you know there's a lot of trash in the park, right? In this park. Tomorrow morning or whenever, that should, those should be empty. You guys normally do it on Friday, so they'll get ready for the weekend, right?
Yeah, we try to. We can draw, I mean, you got a couple more days in there and a lot of, well. A lot of times there's sports stuff on the weekends, but.
Right, cause you're checking Fridays and Mondays currently? But when does youth sports practice?
They started Monday, Monday, Wednesday and Saturdays is when we are up there.
That says it was six on the list, yeah.
If, if the park is rented, do we look to make sure the bathrooms are cleaned up prior to the? Cause I know we, we had that, uh, the spring and it was a mess on Saturday morning when we come there.
We don't have weekend staff. We don't have.
I'm talking about Friday night prepared.
Night staff either. They check it Fridays. Yeah, they check it Fridays. But we don't have night and weekend staff.
I understand that, but I'm saying.
I guess if I can interrupt just for a second. Um, so when, when somebody rents the pavilions or uses the ball diamonds. There is this, you know, and it's in the packets. You guys have this too. There is little rules on here that say, you know, if you. Uh, you keep the bathrooms, check the concessions, bathrooms must be cleaned from your use. On the ball diamonds are the same way. So, I mean, it's, it's not. It, it is public works responsibility to do cleaning, but it is everybody's, I'd be right. I mean, everybody should be.
But I don't think it should be somebody else's responsibility to clean up after someone get off a three-eighty and search you, sports goes, utilizes it.
I, I'm not saying that, Brittany. I, I'm not saying that. She's saying when somebody rents it, they are agreeing, they are going to clean up after. And you know what? That's where I would, I, and I think we've spoken about this.
Oh, yeah.
If I would be checking them before I started my, whatever I had, and if not, I'd be calling, sorry, but you'd have to call Justin about them. But honestly, don't think right now. But we're trying to get the park maintained and we're trying to. Make everything better. We really need to focus on the bathrooms. And I know it's not a fun job, but that's a city park.
Yeah, that's my point. Cause we rented that this spring for graduation. We get there Saturday morning. And the bathrooms were a mess. Kind of was water, urine on the floor, toilet paper all over, bird crap on the bench. I actually know that up. We cleaned it up before we left.
Right.
And that's what it should be and I, and that's the agreement.
Correct.
But somewhere, somebody come in there, are those bathrooms locked?
No.
Every night?
No.
No, that's the thing. I mean, and I'm not saying that we're not, I mean, perfect or, you know, there's a lot of times. No, I, I understand. I'm just saying like, what's to say we don't clean it on a Friday? You guys have youth sports at night and somebody comes in in between and makes, you know, and makes a mess and it looks like we didn't.
Yeah, it does.
I think everybody needs to be all on the same page. And it's not reliable on one person, one organization.
No.
You know, it's.
That's what I'm trying to say. It's a shared response.
I just asked if we could outsource Saturday morning, somebody cleans it. Since we don't have, you know, fifty bucks, a hundred bucks, whatever. Somebody else is doing it and then people mess it up on Friday night. It's clean Saturday morning for people.
If we have somebody who's renting it Saturday and we know that, is there any way somebody could just swing out there, make sure it's in good shape before they leave, before they get there and then? Swing by, spend fifteen minutes. I get it, but we're being, if we're being, if we're going to charge for that or there's an agreement or something like.
We have to, I think we'd have to up our charges.
Say, well, fair, but like. I, I know, but if we're gonna keep having this problem, it's an actual issue. Maybe it's worth it, right? And say like, your money will be credited back if there's no issue. Some of it will be credited back. I mean, what else are you gonna do though?
You're talking about training full city staff and on weekends, on an unpredictable schedule. And you don't even have the funds to cover his late or hour of time.
Yeah, or outsourced or whatever, but.
I'll tell you, outsource, the Porta Johns are over a hundred and fifty a week. Not, so just for clean. So if you want LRS or somebody to come in. So if you want LRS or somebody to come in once, once, and double check the bathroom or something, gotta add a hundred and fifty a week to the budget somewhere. So, I'm not fighting the idea.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, this stuff's gonna take money.
Yeah, it's, it's either we put the money up or we deal with the problem, right? Those are, those are kind of your options.
I just, I don't get why, like, if, we make it like. Justin, you guys, like, every Friday, the last thing you do before you guys leave, I, I don't know, four o'clock or whatever, is to go up and clean the bathrooms Friday. If someone comes in on Saturday and they're destroyed, that person should call the city and report it so that we know someone was in there and it should be on video.
That's right, that's my point, don't we have cameras up there?
But it is every Friday night, the last thing that happens, and then it still gets destroyed, well, then we're gonna know who it was.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then, I don't know, maybe on Wednesdays, you guys rotate responsibilities on who goes up there Wednesday before practices, or I don't know how it looks, but.
Kid, kid, is it, chairs, hands up, some sort of equipment there, the people clean up the bathrooms they leave?
Yeah, we put together, we put together, uh, it's in the park shed, the shed at the park, we put together our cleaning basket with a broom.
Has there been a.
There's a sign.
I don't know if there's a sign saying it's down there, but we do have.
I could find anything up there in the square.
Isn't there something, I thought you said there was something in the concession stand as well?
Inside the concession stand, there's a couple of small things, but that's locked also.
Everything is locked.
Yeah, I mean, we don't have like a small, little cabinet outside of there that we could leave, uh, you can't leave it unlocked anyway, because it would get vandalized or stolen.
Well, and it's not very convenient to want to clean here and want to.
Yeah, that's always other end of the park.
Yeah, I agree. I mean, just maybe for a while till we kind of figure out what's going on.
Yeah, what's the issue?
Yeah, maybe we need to look at Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and then see how that goes for just a little while.
Or daily, like, like, in the morning, Justin, you guys do rounds, like, you know, and check garbages and check bathrooms, you know, hopefully you're not gonna find a mess every day, right?
Right.
But I, I just, my experience with other cities and other public works, that's kind of the, what they call them, their first morning rounds, that's what they did. Especially, obviously, during peak season, right?
Right, but I think our biggest issue is we just don't define this.
Sure.
Like, it's never been, that's what I'm saying, it's no one's fault because.
Correct.
No parks board, youth is new, and no councils ever sat together and said, these are what needs to start happening.
Yeah, right.
That might make, you know, your guys' schedule look different. It's not your fault because no one's ever said.
No.
You guys have to do it, you know, it's, it's ultimately past councils, past parks and recs.
I mean, I had a short career with Swisher, working for the city, but that was the first thing I did every day. I had to go up and look at the bathrooms. That was the first thing I did, nothing else. I had to go up there.
And I hate to say it, it sometimes is a shitty job.
Right, right.
But, you know, we can get you rain suits, I don't know, gloves, whatever you need.
Right.
A hose, a bleach, because you know, the, the, um, fundays committee put in a new stool, two new sinks and a urinal. So obviously we want it taken care of, I mean, that was one of the, where we spent our money, we waited two years to get them in there, so we want to take care of them. Alright, so I think we're in agreement that the plan through, when do they get shut down after youth sports is done in October?
Yeah, when it starts getting closer to, or it's getting cold and we don't want the water to.
So basically, six weeks-ish until we have the point where we close it down, try the day of mourning check, except on Fridays, check it in the afternoon. We'll see how it goes, that will give us a good idea.
I mean, we even painted inside the bathrooms.
Oh, great.
I mean, it's something I do.
Um, but that's also on youth sports, when you guys have practice, if somebody can go in and check it when practice is over, see if. How it's looking, because then we can kind of get an idea on why it's happening and that kind of stuff. Because it's way after.
And I'm not there, I'm not there, it's kind of a. On a system, I'm, I'm not there on my day, I'm there on Wednesday, so, yep, I look what you know.
Yeah, the more we can narrow it down to the timeline with those cameras, the better.
Yeah, because they don't have the time to just watch seven days, twenty-four hours.
Yep.
Alright, uh, weed control, um, so we pulled the eighth agreement there currently, the last is the four years?
We're a little early, oh, okay, is that kind of the same spring and weed all on one?
I don't know, was weed control all around the side, outer sidewalks?
I think that's weed.
Playground, what?
Weed eating, most of that was, yeah.
I would assume that's weed control around that?
I don't know, this is from sports email, I'm just.
Uh, I would say like, yeah, the outer sidewalk, I mean, everything, the batting cage, the down there by the bottom of the diamond, which is not utilized right now, but people are down there. The, around the trash cans, may have pitchers around the fence on the inner fields and is that something?
Which we've already discussed this and everything, that we're gonna put it out either for contract, we're gonna see what, or hire somebody else for the next season, so.
We might have to just kind of deal with it this year, next year, some contractors. Uh, the eighth we pulled as a current agreement, they are supposed to be sprayed, but they sprayed in June.
I called him again last week and told him to come back out, so he was supposed to come up back out and kill everything, he said everything that he sprayed down has pretty much had, he's had to go do everything twice this year because it's. I'm growing like crazy.
Well, I, I think that's one thing, is to have someone come and spray versus contracting out, and then whoever contracts out is responsible for spraying and maintaining.
Yeah, we can do a combo next year, see if we can do this discount.
Have yourself, if we look at eight.
Stables.
Yeah, I mean, there's a lot, I mean, we did that.
Yeah, we got a couple of bits. Could you have that scheduled, like, can you come out the first very month or monthly?
I think it would be weekly, I think it would be when they mow, that would be part of the agreement, is they're doing the weed eating, if, if spraying is needed.
Yes.
Spring. Four, five times a year.
Yeah, that looks, yeah, so have we gotten four or five times a year spraying? How many times have they been contracted?
This will be the second time this year.
No, we, yeah, exactly, it was only done in June, that's what this whole entire bill is for, and this is the whole entire contract.
Okay, we accepted, we accepted it late in the year.
May, yeah, and you know, well, this says like June ten, eleven, the first two sprays in the year.
Did the fence lines on June twenty-sixth?
I know that was done, because I could tell, I mean, there's just ta- a tag.
So is that, I don't know, does that, does it have to be done every month, every couple of weeks, I mean, okay, season, it's, a lot of it's also the thing on Friday.
But I think we're on there, we're spraying just this year.
It says contract note, they determine all the dates, you just sign up for the program and they'll come out four times a year, whenever it's best for them or the product or whatever.
But we can't wait until May to set up contract, we need to get it in like January, February, because both spray. Are people for the first one? Alright, moving on, volleyball, tennis, pickleball, care.
Assistant extra.
Um, obviously, no, there's no budgeted items. In this facility, I don't. What do you think?
Probably should be.
I can tell you, the only things that, as far as the basketball slash tennis courts go, since I've been here, that we've done is. We've pulled weeds out of all the cracks and cracked sealed that court one time, and we purchased a new net for the tennis court. Um.
And you guys put up new hoops too?
We put, we put up new basketball hoops, that was the first year I got here, and, uh. The lines and stuff, I was always told by Tanya that where somebody that lives right down by the park has stencils for all that stuff, so, and somebody did stencil blue, it looks like, must be pickleball, I don't know. Somebody stenciled that on there, um, and somebody did, I think, stencil one basketball hoop, uh, maybe last year, beginning of this year. Um.
Truthfully, that whole thing needs to be repaid.
Somebody played pickleball up there and like every hit, it was hitting a crack and bouncing off, and they were so discouraged, they just left.
Yeah, we pulled, we pulled weeds and tried to seal it, keep them down, just to, just to help, but it's pretty bad.
What's that?
Oh, to resurface?
Oh, yeah.
Uh. Was it just a tennis court or two the last time? It was like thirty green.
See, that's where like.
And you guys have a lot bigger.
I guess I'm selfish because I've never used that, and then, maybe it's because the state of it, I don't see many people over there, but I see people down at the ball diamond, I see people at the pavilion. Like, to me, that's a project that probably happens down the road, like, sadly, like, and that's what people have to realize, is we can't do everything in a year.
Right.
But if you start doing some things, there's encouragement.
That's right.
And, and maybe we come out, once we start getting quotes and we budget, and say, here is a five-year plan for the park.
Right.
That we could unfold, you know, like, we have comprehensive plans for every other damn thing in this town, let's do one for the park.
Alright, the volume of reservations.
Yeah, so I just am asking, uh, the park and rec and the council to consider, um. Well, maybe upping, I know we talked about upping looking, so, and then. Request or require pay heads at the time of reservation, does that seem unreasonable to anyone? That's kind of been what I've been doing all year long, but I kind of got some pushback here from a local person who felt like they were. Not gonna do that, and I better have my Ps and Qs all put together, because where does it say that, and if they want to cancel, which they did, two days before the reservation this year, and hadn't paid. If they paid that twenty dollars then, and they canceled, will they get their twenty dollars back? And I said, I, I would have to take that to the park and rec or.
And say it two days before, heck no, because we could have rented it up to somebody else.
That's what I said, and I said, to me, it just is not, it's not courteous to all those folks that called all year long, and I told them that that day that you had wasn't, wasn't available, but now you're coming in two days before.
Seventy-two hours because of holiday weekends.
I would do more, I would save, I would save, I would save more than that.
Yeah, exactly.
Or say, thanks for your money.
So I guess if that's okay.
I can say thanks for your money.
Because it's not that big, and even if we raise it to fifty bucks, thanks for your money.
That's the next question.
That's the, that's the addition.
No, no refunds, well, then, maybe it's not hard on us to make a motion.
I would make a motion to raise it to seventy-five?
Okay, what if, like. We have both the large and the small pavilion, and right now, we all know it's twenty dollars, and that includes the concession stand. So you have to decide large, small, concession extra or no, as a private key, and, and I've never had a problem with it. If you have to re-lock all those doors because somebody doesn't bring their key back, that's gonna be a big bill. So those are just things to think about. And if you want to think about it and discuss it next meeting, it's not anything that has to happen.
I mean, I haven't rented a pavilion anywhere, ever.
We pulled up in council one day, just Iowa City, and it's a wide grant, but there really isn't anything at the four bucks, and those are just tiny little ones. Once you started getting the concession stands and all that, then you're talking.
Is it all the sewers or just?
It's, it's her.
I, I don't know, but do, normally, do they do them all or not?
Yeah, Swisher. No, it does not go together, no. You just, what, I'm sorry, yes, but some people say, oh, I don't need the concession stand.
But it's part of it, it's included in the law.
Yeah, that's.
I would say just make one fee and let, you know, let, let them use what they want all the, the sewers up there.
Well.
Well, no, if you want to keep them separate, then two different people can rent to their.
Yes, yeah.
Have you ever had the problem with two?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Are you, are you talking about the large and the kitchen, or are you talking about the small?
Large and the small.
Keep those separate, but the large in the kitchen, I agree, should just be one thing, yeah, I don't, that's fine, because nobody's gonna rent the kitchen and not the, or rent the large pavilion and not the kitchen and have someone else rent the kitchen.
Actually, I have run into that this year.
Tell them too bad next time.
Somebody, somebody wanted a pavilion, got the small, that was all that was available, and said, well, what about the concession stand? Let me call the person, I'm pretty sure they said they didn't want it, but if it's not, you can use it.
Oh.
So.
I think you guys take that back too.
Yeah. Okay, you put that on urgent.
Thank you.
Thank you for adding it.
Yeah, sure, no problem. Alright, moving on, Swisher Youth Sports Funds. Talking about the transfer that you guys.
So, we are requesting, uh, to have our funds transferred to our account that we set up through a second state bank. Uh, so that's, now we have our own entity, and that's good start, uh, managing that ourselves, that way it's not on your foot.
I think that would just be the city, I don't know.
So.
Alright, council needs a motion.
Those funds that we use for.
Somebody needs to motion. No, 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 it's, no, we hold their money.
We, it's their money, we're just.
The treasurer's report was in there, it's like, there's like sixteen thousand, but that's just today, or it might be.
Sixteen five three twenty-two.
Sitting in with the city's funds.
Motion to transfer Swisher Youth Sports.
Perfect.
Love it.
All in favor of the transfer?
Again, it might be more or less because of bills, and so sixteen thousand five hundred three dollars and twenty-two cents.
All those in favor?
Alright.
Anyone opposed? What shares? Alright, uh, youth sports twenty twenty-five schedule.
Um, we have some feedback from our parents that they are wanting. Food and beverages while things are being played, our games being played on Sa- Saturday, and so we, um, thought of doing a food truck. Um, I contacted, um, Grind Coffee, um, out of Fairfax, um, to come in, and, um, the yearly permit is in progress. Just kind of need to get it approved, um, right now, she just has two available times in September, or excuse me, in October, um, but we're looking to do some more on the twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, just as long as any food truck, whether they're coming from one day or a full year, they do need repairs, come in, pull that.
Yes, so we are gonna cover the cost of the yearly special U sports, um, and then.
And I know council last year had approved that the lows could do the concession stand free of charge, are they not doing the concession stand anywhere?
No. Well, that is not very profitable, honestly.
And we just don't want to be, I mean, I'm coaching, we don't have volunteer help to open up the concession stand, we're at a loss, and what, you know, the parents are asking.
The risk of toxic food loss and things, it's just not worth it.
Sure.
Let somebody else take over it.
And so are you talking that about not using, opening the concession stand?
We're not, okay, no, the concession.
Because I know you talked about that a little bit.
So this, this, uh, Grind Coffee, she offers, um, breakfast, so like muffin center rolls, breakfast sandwiches, burritos, and then drinks includes coffee, tea, hot chocolate, lemonade, refresher, smoothies. And we're opening it up to the whole community, I mean, everybody in Swisher can come up and use it, it's not just for Swisher Sports, so we're gonna make an event, you know, I hope people share it.
When you set the dates that they're gonna be there, make sure you partner with Bowery, so she can get involved in the city Facebook page as well.
Okay, so you're right, a lot of people in town might just walk up there and do dinner, but.
Yeah, and it's just in the morning, though, we're not doing.
Whatever, it's Saturday morning.
Well, should we turn in food trucks, so I can.
Um, can we just combine this in the next item too?
And then just one more thing, uh, we might be doing like an end of the year program, um, or like a gathering with all of Swisher Sports coming up to the field. And, um, I don't know if you guys have Kona Ice, um, and like, it's, uh, Travel and Tom Coffee, I've heard of them, I know they got.
Yeah.
Okay, because I know they were at Swisher Fund Days and then.
Kona West? Kona West, they don't, they don't have licenses.
Is it permanent annual or a calendar year?
Yeah.
Like, is it, so if they get it, it's for twelve months, it's not, okay, not just till December for the period, at least.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll wait till that, but I just didn't know if we could utilize that also if they have a permit.
Yes.
Is that all?
As long as they have permits, they can do whatever they want.
Yeah, and they'll just, if, and, and maybe they do have one right now, Kona does, but they didn't need to renew it for the year, but, um, if they, you know, just email me saying, hey, we'll be up at the park on.
Okay, and we need to disclose that with, when their, when food trucks are coming up, we need to disclose that with city, or we can.
Just email me, and I'll give it to Bowery and.
Yeah, I just didn't know if we needed to get it pre-approved for.
Oh.
Once it's through.
No.
Okay.
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
Perfect, thank you.
And then, per B, some lights?
Yeah, um, with that, we wanted to. Yeah, um, with that, we wanted to do also for summer ball, um, using like the game, a game at nighttime, um, so it'd be like, it's, right now, we have potentially a Saturday and a Sunday, um, in July. Uh, and just utilizing the lights and did not know, um, and in the past, we don't.
It's not, yeah, it'd be up to you guys to, to waive anything, so I, I don't have any issue with it, but that's not my decision.
Somebody out there wants.
It is the library.
Is it also, that's the way for parks and rec?
You guys, you, the money comes to the city.
It's a one-night event?
It's a two-night, just Saturday and Sunday, um, right now, or potentially, and I can get, come back, tell you exactly, but, um.
So, alright, yeah, okay, so, motion to approve food trucks.
Yep.
And motion to allow, waive, use of lights.
For two nights.
For two nights.
Second.
Okay, okay.
Moving now.
Yeah, okay, okay, alright, all in favor?
Alright.
Anyone opposed? Bush carries. Uh, Curry High School back school bash has already been set. Um, so they want to talk about where they can park their buses, they wanted to like park way over here and somewhere and have kids walk, and I'm like. There's someplace over there that they can park and Justin had an idea, but I don't know if that's gonna be big enough.
Oh, I think, if they just have a bus and a truck inside, I think, on that pad over by the tons that was on that side, that pad that's dangerous, the fire barrel races on.
Because I, I just said.
Oh, water ball.
So I don't know.
I mean, I think that.
Yeah, truck and trailer and a bus.
Yeah, I mean.
Drop the kids off back down it, it's a lot easier.
Yeah, well, she said that they were talking about parking on a shore, so I'm sure that'd be better than.
That'd be way better than parking on any of those streets up there with a bus.
Yeah.
They got only one, only one bus, you think?
I think that's, they said a bus and then a truck and a trailer, what they put in there.
I, yeah, I don't know, listen. So, is that a motion to approve using the park?
Have fun.
Cardboard.
They can do it.
We need a motion.
I motion to approve them using the. Water ball pad.
Second, that, second by me.
Volunteer? Hi.
Great.
This is how.
All opposed?
Should be run.
Probably pro for three people.
Anyone opposed?
You guys got a chair too?
Oh, we just jumped in.
You guys need to motion. Second.
Any opposed?
Should be running your meetings.
Please.
Would you like me to still send you an email for, like, pricing pavilions on our agenda for this next month?